Good evening and welcome to the December 7th, 2020 meeting of the Wakefield Town Council. I'm seeing all councilors in attendance. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I please have a motion and then a second for the approval of the November 23rd minutes that were included in your packet? Moved by Paul.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jonathan. Roll call, vote, myself, yes. Peter. Yes. Julie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Ed.
Yeah.
And Maureen.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Anyone here? Sheri, is anyone here for public participation?
Yes, we do. We have a handful tonight. Our first one is Bronwyn Delabulpe of 1 Cyrus Street, who will be speaking regarding Agenda Item 7 Market Street Linfield Traffic.
Okay, and if everyone who's doing public participation would just understand, some of you have already done this, that you have, I believe, three minutes to speak. Steve, if you could help time us on that? If folks get a little close and the council may very well not engage with you in public participation, but we will certainly take what you have to say to heart. So Bronwyn, please identify yourself and start speaking. Is Bronwyn here?
We currently have nobody in the waiting room.
Okay, so if Bronwyn pops up, please let me know. Who's next on?
Sure, we have Janine Cook, who will be... Janine, I'm sorry, I don't have your address, but you'll be speaking regarding also Agenda Item 7 Market Street Linfield Traffic and also Agenda Item 6 Developments on Salem Street.
Hey Janine, if you could please identify yourself and you have three minutes to chat.
Janine Cook, 6 Jessica Lane, Wakefield. I just read the letter from Steve that addressed the issue with the Market Street sign directing people to turn left to Axis 95 North and South. Thank you for addressing that. I only had one question and I don't know if Steve can answer it. In the letter, it said during the holiday season, have you been told that this is going to only be there? That it's a temporary thing? Are we assuming this? Because, you know, first of all, it shouldn't be there. And, you know, according to the letter, it shouldn't. But in your letter, Steve, you said during the holiday season, so I didn't know if there was something new that maybe I didn't know.
And I can answer that.
Yeah, please answer.
That's the only time that they seem to put it up, Janine.
Did they do that last year, Steve, also? Because I don't recall that.
Two years ago, I don't remember last year. They've done it before during the holiday season, though.
Yeah, because I'm there all the time and I never noticed it. Maybe I'm more aware of the traffic because of the Salem Street situation, but I didn't know if you had been told that they have said to you, "Oh, this is only for the holiday," but I don't care what it's for. And again, my opinion, it shouldn't be there. We have the agreement. But thank you for that letter and hopefully we won't have to wait till after the holiday because I think giving them an inch is, you know, we're going to be spiking ourself on this. You have to kind of nip these things in the bud. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Janine. Thank you. Did you want to speak to the Salem Street issue or no?
Well, I'd like to. I didn't know if that was all at this point, again.
If you have three minutes, you can use it as you wish.
Okay, wonderful. Are we starting back at zero?
No. No, you've given it enough.
I didn't know that. All right, I wanted to stop talking. Okay. Salem Street issue is a mess. It's a disaster. I do not have a problem with anyone building. I think, you know, if you make $50,000 a year, you can't go out and buy a Lamborghini. You have to live within your means to not have enough allotted spaces for cars. And it is an issue. It's a safety issue. The Walton Street neighborhood, there's one entrance and one exit. If cars park on both sides of the street, there is absolutely no way a bus, a garbage truck, or an ambulance or fire truck are going to be able to access that development. It is a disaster waiting to happen. So, you know, I just wanted to stress the importance of that because there's nowhere else for them to park and, you know, it's something that has to be done before something happens.
So. Great.
I'm still under the three minutes. I'm a good girl tonight.
Thank you so much, Janine. Those are all great points that will certainly take up or other boards that are dealing with these issues will take up as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri, who's next?
Yes, the next participant is Shane McCarthy of 14 Old Colony Drive, who will be speaking tonight regarding the concerns on street parking on Walton Street with the proposed construction plans for Salem Street.
Okay. Okay Shane, if you could identify yourself and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, Shane McCarthy. It was mentioned 14 Old Colony Drive, Wakefield. So I too am in the development that would be affected by these three proposed developments on Salem Street. And it's not just something that we're thinking may happen. We know it will happen. And the reason being is with the current apartment complexes that are here, people are already parking. There's several cars already on Walton Street. We can see them, right? So they park their cars here, lock them up, walk, and go to the apartments. So they're already doing it. You know, with the apartments that are currently here. So if we build more, they will come, so to speak. And we don't want them to come. So I'm all for development, but it has to be done right and there has to be ample parking. So much as Janine had mentioned, I too am concerned just for safety with fire trucks. My kids both go to the schools. We don't want busing problems. You know, and currently, they're trying to park on one side of the street, but if they park haphazardly, it's going to be almost impossible for a car to come down, let alone if they park on both sides of the street. So again, just want to really mirror that concern. I'm all for development, but it has to just, we have to make sure that it's done correctly. And I am not for any additional parking on there. I understand it's a public way, but not for any additional parking. And quickly, I don't know how much time I have, but I also agree with Janine as well about the sign. If that wasn't supposed to be there, that needs to be taken down. You know, we've already lost, and I don't know how that happened with the UPS situation, right? Linfield gets the taxes for UPS and all the trucks go through Wakefield. So now Linfield gets the taxes for Market Street and all, let's send our overflow traffic through Wakefield. If they want to send us some money for taxes, then, you know, to help obtain and maintain the roads, maybe it's something we'll consider, but I don't think we've been seeing that. So I too am against, you know, directing any Linfield taxed derived benefits through Wakefield.
Great. Shane, thank you so much. And certainly when the building projects come before other boards, they're probably a more important board to speak before than us right now, since they can make the decisions. And we will certainly forward your concerns to Traffic Advisory, though. So thanks so much for sharing your ideas.
And I'll just mention, I actually was on their meeting as well.
Great.
I want to make sure this word gets out there. It's very important to us.
Excellent. Thank you. Sheri, who's next?
Sure. The next one is Susan Wetmore, 12 Sunset Drive, regarding Agenda Item Number 7 Market Street Linfield Traffic.
Okay, Susan.
Susan Wetmore, 12 Sunset Drive. I'm going to read this so that I stay within the three minutes and get everything in that I wanted to say. I'm here regarding the current volume of traffic and the impact of the new developments planned for Salem Street. As I'm sure you are aware, my neighborhood consists of Walton Street, Sunset Drive, Old Colony, Jessica Lane, and Renee Drive, with the only way to enter or exit being through Salem Street. Traffic impacts for this neighborhood have dramatically increased in recent years due to the addition of Market Street, the Linfield directive that trucks leaving Kimball Lane must turn left into Wakefield, and cars seeking alternate routes to 128 Traffic. This area saw two truck accidents, one at the top of Walton and one at the top of Kimball Lane this fall. The ability of public safety vehicles reaching this neighborhood and residents being able to evacuate in an emergency is a growing concern. As a resident already dealing with this current situation, now three apartment buildings are being proposed within a very short distance on Salem Street. Not only will this alter the landscape of this area, but it could also potentially affect water tables due to the proximity of the Saugus River, increase traffic substantially, and therefore increase safety concerns for the area. The Zoning Board of Appeals is currently holding hearings on two of these projects, and I have been attending. I often hear that a developer can do a certain project by right. Wondering who can consider the existing homeowner's rights. I'm looking to the Town Council for review of these developments, keeping in mind the unique condition of our neighborhood, that being 100 homes with a single egress to a major street. I'm not opposed to property improvements, but the size and the scope of a project should be in keeping with the existing conditions of the area. I believe the most extensive kind of traffic studies need to be done for these projects as opposed to the two done in July and September during the pandemic. I also believe that more than 1.5 parking spaces per unit will be needed and should be located on the properties themselves. The current proposal with the amount of two-bedroom units planned is unrealistic. In an area of town close to the highway and far from public transportation, renters are sure to have multiple cars. The only area for overflow parking would be Walton Street, which would further cause safety issues. I look forward to hearing solutions from Town Council on the same Salem Street developments as well as the Market Street traffic. And let me add that the signs that are there, I would ask that they come down because I think that would be almost teaching people to use that exit that they're not supposed to. So that if it's up for two or three weeks, the signs come down, people are going to remember that. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Susan. Sheri?
Yes, and our last one that I know about is Sheila Lord of 20 Walton Street, who has concerns about the traffic issues in the Montrose area as the Salem Street project develops.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Sheila, if you could identify yourself and you have three minutes to speak. Not very well, no. No, can barely hear you like a whisper. Not really, Sheila?
All right, well, if you could just hear this, that I am in agreement with Sue Wetmore and the others that have spoken about the concerns. From Walton Street, as a resident of Walton Street, my concerns are the same as theirs, and I just wanted to make that known.
Great. We heard that last part. Thank you very much, Sheila. Okay. Sheri, anyone else?
No, nobody else.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We can certainly talk about some of these issues as they are on our agenda, but certainly I think it'll be, you know, larger conversations clearly with the Salem Street construction with other boards having a bit more power than we do right now. But thank everyone for giving us your ideas and your thoughts and your concerns. Okay, moving on to item number six. We have project updates on several projects. A Community Economic Development Director Plans and Initiatives. I'm really excited to hear from Erin Kokinda this evening, who can tell us everything that she's been doing. So Erin, take it away. And if you could, I don't think last time I was too quick. I didn't have you identify yourself as to your new status in our town. So if you could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, so good evening, everyone. It's nice to see a lot of familiar faces again. You know, I find these Zoom meetings, you get to see a lot more people than you usually would, so it's great. So I just started three weeks ago as the new Community and Economic Development Director for the town. I'm thrilled at this opportunity. It's been a wonderful last three weeks. I've gotten to learn a lot about the community, also got to meet a lot of people internally, but also a lot of organizations outside of Town Hall. And even given during this time, I find I'm able to meet a lot more people this way than I probably wouldn't in normal time. So it's been really wonderful. Just a background, I know I introduced myself in October at this point to the council, but I worked for a nonprofit economic development organization for four and a half years before this, representing 10 communities along the Route 3 corridor, everywhere from Lexington up to Tingsboro. And before that, I worked for the City of Lowell in their Economic Development Office. Also, personally, I'm really excited about this job because I live in the community as well. So I feel that I had the opportunity when I got this job that I already had an idea of, you know, what I could do to best serve this position, but also came in with an outsider's view. So I'm really excited to kind of provide everyone an update of what I've been doing the last three weeks and kind of where I plan on going from what I've learned these last few weeks. So first, I just want to thank Steve. I know he's on this call. He's been amazing, kind of guiding me on what the town's priorities are, where I kind of fit in those priorities, and introducing me to everyone in Town Hall who's been nothing but accommodating and very welcoming to me and very helpful. I know Bill's on the call. I've already had a number of meetings with him, and it's just been really great. And also, I'd like to thank the Town Council for taking the time to meet with me as well and kind of provide me with what their priorities are and what they see this position, what they'd like to see this position accomplish. And I think it was a lot of the things I thought, but I also, you know, was able to learn a lot about where we're kind of coming from. So thank you to everyone that's taken the time to meet with me. It's been nothing but helpful and will definitely help me succeed. So can we go to next slide? So just to give you kind of a quick overview of what I've been doing and where I plan to go, like I mentioned, from the Monday I started, I hit the ground running and started making meetings with a bunch of different organizations. As you know, Paul Rebus is no longer with us, so I am taking on some of the planning initiatives. So I met with MAPC, who's the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, connected with them on projects that they've worked on with the town before and, you know, new projects moving forward. They also connected me with their subregional planning council, which is the North Suburban Planning Council, which I will be meeting with them tomorrow and be able to pick the brains of our surrounding communities planners and kind of see where we can work more at a regional approach to move things forward. I've also connected with the Boston NPO. They have a number of grant programs that they provide to municipalities as well as technical assistance. So they've been really wonderful, especially when it comes to transportation needs. I've also connected with economic development organizations, Mass Development, Small Business Administration, the Massachusetts Small Business Development Center up in Salem State, MOBD, Massachusetts Office of Business Development, Mass Hire through Metro North. And all these organizations, I knew all the contacts there, but from a different region. So I was able to meet a lot of new faces, but I'm also familiar with a lot of what these organizations have to offer. So it's been really great. And I'm actually hosting a webinar with a number of these organizations next week for our small business communities, so they can find out what the resources are, what programs might be coming down the line, and also to plan for 2021. So mark your calendars, December 17th. Also, the local organizations have been so helpful to me. The Wakefield and Field Chamber of Commerce are actually right next door to me. Wakefield Main Streets, I've met with them a number of times. And then Paul, I've met with you with the Wakefield Community Partnership. So it's been very helpful. Also been working on databases. That was one of the roles that they wanted this position to fill. I've been, I registered for a real estate database. That's a national database called CoStar Group. That gives you a lot of great information of available properties in Wakefield and also our region. Gives you demographic information. You can just go on there, search what's available for retail space in Wakefield, and it will give you all the listings of what's available, the property owner, the real estate broker. I just find this really useful moving forward as we're trying to attract new business into our community as a really quick, easy way to find out what's available and fits our business needs. Also, I've been doing internal business database, collecting contacts. I've been going out every day during lunch, introducing myself to the small business community. I've only made my way down Main Street, starting to get to Albion. I've stopped at a few of the new places that I've opened up. The Voltage Boutique, which I recommend to go check out. She did a wonderful job. And then also, I've been doing an intake form. So when people come in, I have an intake form that I've been using to track who I've talked to, where I need to follow up. And then I've alluded to this already, but internal connections. I've met with a number of the departments. Everyone has been wonderful. Engineering, working with them on the Shared Streets program. Jen Communications and Marketing. I think we're going to work really closely together when it comes to marketing. Wakefield has a place to do business. GPW Planning Board, met with Bill today to talk about how I can assist him. Worked with Betsy at Town Clerk. Building Department, I have a meeting this week with them. The Assessor's Office, same thing. The Help Department, and as I mentioned, the Town Council. So next slide. So in the last two weeks, I was able to put some programming together, which I mentioned previously. We will be hosting a Small Business Resource webinar, and it will be really great because this actually, you know, it's targeting Wakefield businesses, but it will be shared with nationally because SBA has to share any events that they're having. So this would be a good way to market the town and also show that we are business friendly. We'll be joined by the SBA, the Small Business Development Center, MOBD, SCORE, Center for Women in Enterprise, and the Wakefield and Linfield Chamber of Commerce. So if you know of any small businesses that are looking for assistance right now, I think this is a great place to start. You can connect with all these folks in one call, so it'd be great. I'm also starting a digital marketing webinar and grant program for the Wakefield small businesses. Hopefully going to be kicking that off in January. I kind of stole this idea. I want to make sure I give them credit. The City of Lowell, they rolled this out back in the middle of the summer to provide technical assistance for their small business community, really having to do with marketing. And they've been working with a marketing consultant who did webinars. And if the businesses attended the webinars and fell within eligible criteria, they were able to apply for $2,000 in grant funding to implement the marketing strategies they learned, either that be websites, social media, a wide variety of things. So I'm kind of taking that and running with it. I think with digital marketing, even after COVID, I think that's going to be really important for our small business community. And then actually today, I just had a call with the Urban Land Institute of Boston, New England as part of their reimagining communities. It's a technical assistance program to study areas in your communities that are having land use concerns. So we are going to be starting that in March and working with them and a bunch of experts as a panel to highlight an area in town that right now has kind of been a stumbling block in development. So they're going to give us ideas of how we can move projects forward within that district. So I'm really excited about that. It should be, it should be great. And we'll be incorporating a lot of stakeholders from the community as well. So there should be more information coming soon on that. Next slide. And then grants, I won't go through this too much, but I am working with Bill for the Shared Streets and Spaces Grant Program. That was the program back in the summer that Mass DOT started in regards to kind of the parklets, helping our small businesses, you know, shared to use program, improving plazas, sidewalks. So we're working through to kind of decide what is the best project for Wakefield. A big thing that they want to work on this round is more permanent, more permanent programming or improvement. So we'll continue to work on that and we'll keep you up to date. I'm also going to be implying at DHCD their Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program. This is a program where we'll be able to apply to receive technical assistance to put together a plan for our local rapid recovery for our downtown or any of our business nodes to kind of think about what the future looks like for them. That could be anything from doing new place making, thinking of ideas to get residents and folks to these businesses in a more creative way. So, next slide. And then just moving forward, I'll be quick here. Really, you know, I spent the first two weeks really connecting and meeting with people and trying to figure out, you know, what direction I'm going in. But really, I mean, I think I'm here to support planning, development, and zoning initiatives that come forward in our town. I am going to be updating the master plan, which hasn't been updated for a while, working on the Wakefield 2030 Vision with Jonathan here and MAPC, the Envision Wakefield. I had a nice talk with Ed the other day about that and how I can assist with the marketing implementation of that project, the Economic Development Council getting that up and running after the new year. I think that would be very helpful in the direction that I should be going in with my job and hearing from stakeholders in the community, working with Jen on marketing Wakefield as a place to live, work, and play. And the big thing is attracting and retaining small and large businesses. I think right now, it's really retaining. And of course, the attraction part is also great, but I really think right now, helping our small businesses and large businesses make sure that they can keep their doors open and then continue to strengthen my relationships with the businesses, real estate professionals, and community partners, not selfishly to help me succeed, but also to help the community go in the right direction. So that's what I have. Hopefully I was quick enough. But yeah, I'm open to any questions.
Erin, thank you so much. And it's a shame you haven't been doing a lot of work the past two weeks that you've been working. I will say this continuously. I don't know if Ed's going to jump on my bandwagon, but yeah, I voted against this position bad. I'm thrilled that we have someone like you, just thrilled in what you're doing. So thank you so much. And if any of our councilors have any questions for Erin. Jonathan?
Thank you, ma'am. Erin, thank you so much. I mean, I, you know, I know we've talked a couple of times over the last few weeks. And even though it's only been three weeks, I'm just profoundly impressed with the amount of work you've done and the amount of ground you've covered. Really appreciate everything that's going through. I just had a couple of quick suggestions and then one question. The first, just in terms of the suggestions and the list of kind of organizations or sort of boards to connect with, I would just make sure that you include the ZBA and the Conservation Commission on that list. I think as we think about development and planning, you know, the planning board, I think, is sort of one piece of a stool, but ZBA and CONCOM have pretty significant components of that as well. And one of the things I hope that we can do is figure out how to weave together a more coherent strategy that sort of all three boards are kind of rowing in the same direction on. So that was just a suggestion I wanted to add. The question I did want to ask, and I, you know, we kind of connected about this a little bit earlier, but, you know, it'd be curious to get your thoughts on any feedback or suggestions you have on the way that we conceptualize the Economic Development Council. I mean, certainly a lot of work and discussion went into that on this council, but, you know, we also did it mindful of the fact that those of us who worked on it aren't economic development people. And so, you know, either tonight or as we get to the place where we start to sort of ramp that group up, I'd really be curious to get any of your feedback or suggestions on ways in which we might, you know, tweak the charter of that group, tweak the membership to make it as productive as possible.
Well, yes, I did take a look at kind of what you guys voted on, decided on what this kind of makeup of this council will look like. And I think you guys hit a lot of the important topics that need to be covered in this group, not only for the community, but for myself and this role in kind of the direction I should be heading in. The one thing I did mention, and I think it's very crucial to any economic development, is the community and cultural partnerships that, you know, I think play a huge role, especially when we're trying to draw people to our business nodes, but also just to have them more engaged. So I think if we could add that piece to it, I think that would be really helpful because like I said, I think they play a huge role in economic development for any community. But I think it's a great starting point, and I think I have my ideas of the certain stakeholders that I think would be very valuable for that council. But yes, I'd love to continue that conversation. And, you know, I think, like I said, it would be very helpful to me, so.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you again for everything that you've done in the few short weeks that we've had you on board.
Well, thank you. It's been fun. Everyone's been great.
Thank you, Jonathan. Jonathan, I see Julie's hand raised.
Hey, thanks, Erin. I know we haven't had a chance to connect, but we are hopefully this week. I second everything Jonathan said about the council. I think that now that you're on board, we should be able to get that moving. The only other thing I wanted to suggest, and I was going to bring it up later in the meeting, is this Thursday, I understand that there's going to be an overview of the Wakefield Resilience Framework review. There's been a lot of, okay, I'm hoping you're going to attend that because I think that's going to be really important. You know, we're very deliberate in calling your position community and economic development. And I think kind of the sustainability and the resilience issues are going to be a key part of that. So I'm hoping to be there, and I just wanted to mention it for anybody to attend.
Yes, it's on my calendar, so I will definitely be there.
Very good. Good. I look forward to talking to you further.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Paul?
Thank you, ma'am. Erin, how are you tonight?
I'm doing well. Doing well and away from my screaming children, so.
You've been one busy little lady since the last time we've talked to one another.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You've been very busy since the last time we talked.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry I haven't gotten back to you. I figured I'd give you a little more time before we have our second discussion. And you've been way too busy to talk to an old man. So you've been doing a great job. I like the direction that you're going into. There's a lot of issues at hand out there economically. I know we can't address them all at once, but as we do address them, I hope that we do it in such a way where we are putting our best foot forward in accomplishing the goal, our perceived goals of what the future may hold for Wakefield. So a lot of weight on your shoulder, have a lot of faith in you. I was one of the strongest proponents of your position. So I'm glad to have you on board and I look forward to our next discussion.
And I should mention too, the business community, community, and when I've been walking around, they've been nothing but welcoming and very, they've been very positive. And I think I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge that because sometimes that doesn't happen and they've been really wonderful and great. So, so I just wanted to make sure I put that out there.
Excellent, thank you again.
Maureen.
Hi Erin. It's, I'm going to echo what everyone said. It's so great to see you and, and you've definitely hit the ground running and come down to Julie and I, Julie and I's end of Wakefield. We met at one of the coffee places down here. I just wanted to build off what Jonathan said. I think some of the, the commissions that he mentioned are great. And as, as I said, when we met, just, you know, we were deliberate in adding community in this job description. And so think about the ACE Cultural Exchange, the, the, the Cultural Council, the Historical Society. We have actually, you know, we have 35, I think at last count, maybe it's higher now, 37 boards and commissions, but we do have some related to kind of community building and arts and historic. And I think what a great partnership that they have now to work with you on, on, you know, making our town better and brighter. So thank you.
Thank you, yeah. No, any recommendations you guys have, have my contact information, please send them my, send them my way. It's very helpful.
Great. It looks like we are all set for counselors. So Erin, thank you so much for coming and giving us such an exciting update. I can't wait to see what's next, so.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And again, you know where to find me.
Absolutely. Have a nice night.
You too.
So moving on to 6B, which is the MBTA Crossing at Broadway Street. I am going to, I assume, send this to Bill Renaud at some point, or Joe?
I think it's also both.
Okay.
I have a quick PowerPoint. I know this won't be as exciting as Erin's, but just next slide, please. So to give you a little background from where we started last time, I gave you a quick, brief update. I tried to get into a little bit more detail here, just to, to give you kind of the bigger picture and what actually is going on. So, so basically, all of this started back in 1994 when Congress looked at some issues that were happening down in Florida and required FRA to issue some federal regulation to mandate horns to be sounded at all upgrade crossings throughout the, throughout the country. Also gave the ability for, for FRA to create exemptions. And that's the quiet zone that we're, that we're talking about. So in 1996, Wakefield provided notice of a pre-rule because they knew that the, essentially, the FRA was to develop the train horn rule, but it hadn't been developed yet. So we, we developed a pre-rule quiet zone, which gives us some, for one was a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week quiet zone. Quiet zones aren't always developed that way. They can be for sections of your town. It can also be for certain hours of the day. But Wakefield had the vision and understood where this was going to go and got in pretty early to make sure that essentially they were, they were grandfathered into the program. Follow-up to 2003 and we file with FRA to maintain the pre-rule quiet zone. Again, the, the big importance though is having a pre-rule quiet zone will ease future compliance requirements that we'll have, basically that we're trying to, to meet right now. Fast forward to 2005 and the train, the train horn rule becomes in effect. That gives municipalities about two years to look at and submit a notice of intent and a notice of detailed plan for any improvements that they need to make at their, at their crossings. So if you remember in the last one, we talked a little bit about the quiet zone risk index. So it's essentially like a, a level that we have to stay below. And so what, what we were doing in 2007 was submitting this notice of intent to make sure that we stay below that threshold. We get that all approved by May of 2010 with the completion, the installation of improvements at various crossings around town. And we receive our, our quiet zone, our notice of quiet zone establishment. Next slide, please. So as part of that application, we had to look at two things. Supplemental safety measures and alternative safety measures. The supplemental safety measures and measures are basically the four that you see below. So there are four items that, that FRA provided in their rulemaking that said, these are what we would consider essentially, you know, out of the, out of the box, put them in, install them and you'll get a specific reduction factor to your index. So that's closing a crossing. That's actually what we're doing at Broadway right now. Installing a four quadrant gate system, which essentially has all four approaches have a mast arm that comes down and stops the, the traffic. Installing some type of channelization device with the two gate system and then installing non-mountable medians with two gate systems. If we do not do one of these four type of, of measure, of installations, then we have to do what's called an alternative safety measure. And we have to propose what we believe that the, the quiet zone reduction or the risk reduction would be. And that ends up what, what has happened to a bunch of our crossings in town. Next slide, please. So if we look at Chestnut Street, I picked this one because it's actually the only one that actually meets the, the supplemental safety measure requirements. So back in 2010, what was done is Chestnut Street was made into a one-way where we have the gate that's shown on the, on the plan in red. And they bumped out certain portions of the roadway so that traffic can only go essentially from North Ave towards Tuttle Street. And you can see the photo in the picture there that shows those little planted areas. So that was done, that's, that's what was done back in 2010. If we go to the second slide, the next slide, please. Thank you. Prospect Street. So this one's a little different. We have one, the section that's coming from North Ave. So you see the gate that's with the one-way ramp. That actually meets the requirements for, you know, for a one-way and actually is an SSM. However, you see the median that's, that's in there between Emerson and the train tracks and then the small median that's there between North Ave and the tracks. That actually doesn't meet the requirement. So the requirement would have to be a minimum of 60 feet, up to 100 feet of channelization in both directions. So obviously we can't meet that, but the claim was made essentially that we would have a full SSM here, even though we don't meet that from the letter of the law. If we go to the next slide. So Broadway was a similar situation. So we, what we did is we installed a 85-foot median in either direction. But what we have is if you look at the, at the bottom section of the slide, there's a commercial driveway that's essentially adjacent to the train tracks. Location of that commercial driveway, that makes that quadrant essentially non-compliant. Again, we took an SSM credit when we needed to take a ASM, so an alternative, alternative safety measure proposal, which is not what we did. Next slide, please. So what we have done is gone through and looked at each of the crossings over the past couple of weeks since we've, since I talked with you last. If you look at, you show each of the six crossings and what I've done is of carved off a portion of that Prospect Street ramp, which actually meets all the requirements for an SSM. We had the pre-existing column, so that, that basically is the calculator that comes from FRA looking at traffic counts and the accidents that have happened within the roadways. What we do is then we apply a reduction factor for each one of these as we go through. Because none of our other crossings went through the ASM approval process, we're not really able to take credit for any of those, any of those, those supplemental measures that were installed. So that's basically what you're seeing in the short-term portion. So by keeping Broadway closed, that eliminates that 71,000 worth of, if you want to think of it as, as risk, 71,000 points of risk. And if you eliminate that completely, we still stay below the national average, which is 19,415 on the slide. So what we're proposing is we've gone through and looked at these ASMs and I'll come up with a series of proposals, which I believe are, I would say fairly conservative. But again, they have to be reviewed and approved by, by Federal Rail down in Washington DC. And so we've basically gone through a series of, of reviews to see what, at each intersection, depending on what type of improvement that we would make, what kind of reduction we would get and how we were able to get below that number, that 19,415 number. So our midterm proposal is by reinstalling the Broadway medians and taking several sections of credits based on what we've, what we're proposing, we can just barely get below it at 19,281. That's not a good situation to be in from a town standpoint. That will work short, in the short term, or I'm calling it midterm right now. And that would last for a few years because what we do is we have to re-file with FRA every three years to look at all of these numbers again. So they look at the traffic council, obviously traffic count goes up pretty much every year. We also have the potential for additional accidents. So if any of those were to happen, and realistically, if we just have a small increase in traffic, we would be out of compliance again and we have the, the potential for losing our, our, our quiet zone. So my recommendation would be to look at a long-term installation of quad gates at Broadway, which would lower us significantly and bring us even further below the national average, which is what we would want to be. So that would knock us down to about 14,000, which gives us some buffer, which would last us a few more years. And then we may have to look even longer out to make some additional improvements. But basically, short-term right now, we have to, we have to look at keeping Broadway closed until we get their agreement with all of the ASMs that I've proposed and the, and the risk reductions I proposed. And then the long-term would be the installation of the quad gates at Broadway. So if we go to the next slide, please. So next steps, so short-term, in talking with FRA, they have asked us to add Jersey barriers to the Broadway Crossing temporarily until they finish their review. That review can take somewhere between 30 and 60 days. So we're in the process right now of amending our, our application with them and we'll be forwarding that. I'm hopeful within the, within the week, we should be able to get that document out to FRA for their review and for them to look at what ASM credits that we're taking and hopefully get consensus. As soon as we get consensus, we're basically ready to mobilize and install those center islands and open the crossing back up. Again, that would be what I'm calling a midterm, a midterm improvement because we would still want to look at installing those new quad gate systems within the next, within the next two, two years or so to dovetail with some MBTA work that's going to be going on there. So that's kind of where we stand. Maybe a little bit, a little bit much to digest, but I tried to give you something at least so you can, you know, review through it even after this meeting if you need to. And answer, I can answer any questions that you may have. So that's where we're at.
Great. Bill, thank you so much. I think any way that we can open it somehow, to me, is really important. I'm not as concerned about getting the residents access because I'm one of them. It's a pain in the neck, Broadway being closed for me. I don't, I can deal with that, but the businesses, you know, Erin and I had lunch when we had a meeting at Early Harvest and they indicated that their lunches were down 80% because they typically get Harvest Mills area. And so I'm just really concerned about the businesses there. So if there's some way we can do a short-term, midterm, and then looking down the long, that, I think that's great and I thank you for the work. That even though I wasn't following everything you said, I followed most of it. It definitely made sense. Ed, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Bill, for this overview. Question for you, does the FRA have any sort of ability to have like a hardship exception or something else along those lines while this all gets sorted out? Because to Ed's point, you know, our businesses are being killed right now. And I don't, I don't think it's just, you know, that, that plaza. But I mean, we're really diverting your traffic, a lot of resident traffic from going to a lot of different businesses in the entire area. And it's really changing people's behaviors and it's a real annoyance for anyone who's accustomed to going that route. Is there, is there not some sort of accommodation or special dispensation we can be asking for under any kind of exception or hardship here?
No, I have asked, I have asked. And basically, it was a non-starter and I was told there's absolutely no way to do that. We looked at potentials for, I looked at, you know, anything that we could do temporarily, even at other crossings. They said that they don't allow for any temporary. It has to be permanent construction for you to take your credit. Again, and I, and I mentioned this in the last presentation a couple of weeks ago. The big key here is that we're a pre-rule quiet zone. And so for us, for them to start blowing the horns again, I mean, we could open this tomorrow and let them blow the horns. Problem is though, is that we don't get, we have to go to a, now even lower standard to get there. So we were talking about that one quad gate. I mean, that's a $2 million improvement right there, just for that one quad gate. We'd be looking at probably two to three quad gates based on my analysis that I've done and improvements at, in a bunch of other, you know, with the Greenwood Crossing as well. So we really, we really don't have any other options. This is, we're working really as fast as we can, unfortunately.
And my understanding too, Bill, on that is from your last presentation, that it basically, we, we, I guess if you want to call it like grandfathered status, if we went to blowing horns, then we kind of recalibrate and then we're in a position where we have even stricter standards than we would have keeping our current status and going through the process at present, right?
Exactly. So that's not something that we would want to do. And there are communities that have that going on right now. Chelsea had that happen, I think I mentioned this in the last presentation, but Chelsea lost their quiet, their pre-rule quiet zone status basically because they were notified and just didn't do anything and they just sat on it. So, you know, we were notified and talked to them about it as we were looking to reinstall the, the medians on Broadway. And that's what essentially what triggered their discussion with us and let us know that essentially their original filing had, you know, these, these issues that need to be addressed. So I've been working with them. I've had, I've had three meetings with them, a couple of Zoom meetings, one onsite meeting. And then I've, I've been going back and forth on emails and essentially I'm following their recommendations. Washington knows this is coming. So whether it would be the full 60 days, that's what they have, I would tend to doubt that. I'd expect it to be more in the month timeframe. But all that being said, we are getting close to the holidays. So who, you know, who knows what happens down there. But, you know, ultimately, we're, we're going to be ready to file this thing this week. And at that point, it's really up to them to, to get the review done. Hopefully agree with, with the estimates that, that are presented to them as to how, you know, the credits that we're taking, again, which I think are conservative. So, you know, I'm hopeful that they'll, that they'll agree, but you know, obviously I can't guarantee that. So there could even be an iteration. So, I mean, I'm saying best case scenario, we're looking at 45 days that we'd be able to get that, that open. And I think that's best case scenario.
And is there any way to engage our congressional delegation in this to, you know, try to expedite things on the FRA end so that we don't just become just, you know, another project to be working on? Because, because this is, this is really economic suicide to a lot of our businesses in that area.
Well, I mean, just to give you an idea of some of the dialogue I've had in Washington, you know, as, as we started discussing the, you know, the, the proposals and how I was planning to, to, to file this with them. I have got some agreement on some of the, some of the calculations that I've done already. So we are having a dialogue back and forth. So it's not like I'm throwing this into a black box.
Right.
You may or may not know your background. So, you know, I would say right now, we already have the dialogue going. I would think maybe within a couple of weeks, if we don't hear something back, that might be a time to maybe put a nudge in. But I wouldn't go out of the gate with it, to be honest with you, because they've been very, very receptive and very responsive to me, so.
Okay. All right, well, we thank you for, for the update, as unfortunate, you know, as the circumstances are.
Thanks Ed. Paul. Mute, you're on mute, Paul.
Thank you, Erin, for the acknowledgement. Bill, thank you very much for the update on the Broadway Crossing. A couple of things based upon what you were saying. You listed a couple of indicators that could potentially knock us out of the quiet zone and put us in, and that would be increase of, an additional increase of traffic and/or another accident. So if another accident occurred by some strange incident between now and their approval, it would automatically knock us out of the box because now we, we reach a different limit. Because now we, we reach a different limit.
Right. But the way that, the way it works is a three-year cycle though, Paul. So what we would have, we don't file back with them. So I'll make this application to them. They'll approve it. And then I go, I start a new three-year cycle. So there'd be a three-year window before they could pull that from us. So my goal would be to try to have the long-term improvement done within that three-year window so that we're not running on that line. That's, that's the goal.
Oh, oh, okay. So I, I see what you're doing. So, so we're going to shoot for trying to get the, um, the permission to reopen it with saying that it can still maintain a safe, I mean, a quiet zone and, and maintain the safety. And knowing that should anything happen in an increase in traffic, because we, we all know that there will be an increase in traffic with the development going on on Boundary Street. So that, that's going to be a factor when you do your calculation. So in three years' time, you're looking at possibly doing one or two quadrants.
Right. Exactly. And, and the, and the other thing, okay, go, I'm sorry, go ahead, Paul. No, I was just going to say the other thing too is the, so, you know, we talked about traffic. I'm not using today's traffic as part of that application. That was one thing that we had discussed because obviously if I did traffic counts today, we'd be way, way lower, obviously, right off the bat. So we did look, I did look at that as a potential, um, easy fix, um, to get us through three years. Um, that didn't work and didn't fly with them. They said they wanted us to use the last application that we had and that available data as considered the best data. Um, even though they know right now it is, it is even lower risk. So, um, so we've, you know, I've tried all different avenues to try to see if there's a quicker way to open this up. Unfortunately, I just keep hitting a wall, unfortunately, on all of them, but.
And I, and I appreciate your efforts and, and now that they're telling you to take down the fences and put up Jersey barriers is just another block. Um, I, I will echo the same concern that others have had and will continue to have. We have to do something as a community. If that's, but the blockades go up, the Jersey barriers go up. We have to do a way of supporting in advertising or promoting the businesses that are down there better than what we're doing now. It, uh, there has to be some sort of sign that we can put up or put the word out on our Facebook page, on the town website, saying that the community is still open, the businesses are all accessible via Nord Ave. And, and we have, there's got to be something that we can do because that whole plaza is suffering right now. Um, and, and I, I've talked to several of them in there and it, it, it's the same story, one in, one after another. But I appreciate what you're doing right now, sir. Um, doing a great job. Um, I wish you the best of luck dealing with the FRA.
Right. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Um, Jonathan.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Bill, for the, the update and for all the work you're doing there. I, I especially appreciate the creativity that goes into trying to convince them to use today's traffic. To, uh, approve us. Uh, just two quick questions, uh, first on, on timing. So you've talked about sort of the review period that the FRA has of thirty to sixty days. If and I hope when they give us the approval for the midterm plan, is there any lead time from a construction standpoint for us or are we pretty much ready to go as soon as they give us the thumbs up?
As soon as we get the thumbs up, we're ready to, we're ready to go. We still have the curve that was there before. So, uh, we'll check to make sure we have all the pieces. Uh, we're ready to mobilize. We can get up as soon as we get the go-ahead.
Okay. Uh, and just the second question, the last time, uh, I think at our last meeting and you referenced it today, there is a commercial driveway that's right by the, uh, that crossing. Is there any remediation that needs to be done for that in the short term or the long term? Or is that something that, you know, can kind of exist as is? I, I would guess over the long term, if we have the quad gates, it becomes less of an issue because it would be outside of the, um, the, the swing of those gates.
Right. So with the quad gates, the, the, the island wouldn't actually need to be there, I believe. So, um, so there's, there's a little bit better, um, you know, provision for that. But, uh, uh, I mean, aside from that, if we had relocated, that would have helped our numbers. But unfortunately, um, we looked into it. Joe and I both, uh, went there. Um, we talked to the, the owner as well as looked at alternative, you know, routes and, and other options as well to make that work. Um, unfortunately, there's nothing that's really an easy solution. If there was something, we would have went with that because I think it would have been a lot quicker, to be honest with you. Right. Because if we're using, we don't have to get the, the approval. We just have to tell them this is how we're doing it essentially, if you want to look at it that way. So by going with these alternatives or having anything that doesn't essentially come out of that box that they have and pop down onto the ground, um, if you want to kind of visualize it that way, um, if, if there's any deviation from that, then I have to get approval on my reduction. So.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Um, thanks, Jonathan. Uh, Julie.
Thanks, Bill. Um, I guess I'm thinking kind of forward and, you know, we have a number of crossings in town. If we ever have future construction that needs to be done, is this something that we, you know, think about? Um, you know, make a decision around, you know, I mean, this has definitely been disruptive and, um, it, it seems like it kind of caught us by surprise. I'm just wondering kind of like, what's the process going forward? I don't care what happened in the past, but what's, you know, what's the process going forward? Does it going to keep us from doing future renovations?
No, no, nothing like that. So one of the other things that, that happened, so since two thousand and ten, we, we, we were required to do three-year updates and we weren't doing those. So there would have been other options for them to chime in here. So we might have even caught this before. And that would have been the option. But again, even if this happens, say, you know, we did this in two thousand and ten was when we got the quiet zone. Say we, we filed in twenty thirteen. We would be sitting here with the same exact problem. We would have had to close one of the crossings. So it might have ended up being instead Albion Street or something. So, um, you know, that really is what it ends up being. So, you know, I think with our, um, with going with the, the long-term solution, that gives us enough of a buffer. So even if there is an accident or two, and I mean, inevitably there's going to be an increase in traffic. We know that's already going to happen, right? So, um, so we know that's one piece, but you know, we can also look at, you know, another quad gate installation. Maybe, we might need one in fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road as traffic increases. But I'd say, you know, our long-term plan puts us in a good situation for a conceivable amount of time.
That's really helpful to, to, to know that we're looking at it holistically and, and looking at those points as a process too. So thank you.
Um, Ed.
Just Bill, a quick, a quick point about what you mentioned. Is there not a way that we could kind of alternate closing of certain crossings? As to be able to free up Broadway, but say maybe close off Chestnut, say for a week or then close off, you know, down, um, in Greenwood for a week. So, so we're kind of, you know, spreading it out over the crossings. Would that, would that help to get our number down to a acceptable level?
No, unfortunately, the, the key here is that the Broadway, if you looked at the, the chart that was, was up for, you know, a minute.
Yeah, the number's really high because seventy-one, right?
Seventy-one's the key. That's the key. We're dropping that seventy-one down to zero. And so if we have, the reduction will drop us, I believe, to until like fourteen thousand or somewhat, whatever the number is that it drops us down to. Um, you know, ultimately that's the biggest bang for the buck. That's really what it comes down to. So because of the, the, that accent that was there, that becomes the high-risk area. That's why we have to focus everything on the Broadway crossing, unfortunately. So in my analysis, I actually looked at Broadway, I looked at, at Prospect, I looked at the quad gates in different locations. I looked at, I, I went through several iterations, permutations, however you want to look at it, to see what would work and what would be the quickest and easiest. And also thinking long-term to see if maybe we didn't have to do the quad gates because that's going to require a lot of work to, to coordinate with MBTA. Um, that's not something I definitely would have preferred to avoid if we could have, but unfortunately, um, we can't avoid that either. So, um, I, I think unfortunately, what, what we have in front of us is by far the best plan provided, um, the FRA agrees, um, with the, with the calculations and we are kind of where we are at the, at the moment. So.
I guess just from the town side of things, I know that we have pushed out some information online, Steve, um, but I do think an information campaign, just, you know, reiterating, not so much like, you know, five paragraphs explaining the situation in detail, but just kind of like short little bursts. So people realize that those businesses are open, that there, you know, that there are routes to get there. I think that would really, uh, you know, um, do a, do a, a good service to the businesses that are really being impacted by this. Um, and I don't think we can get that out enough, um, especially on social media. So the people know businesses are open, alternate routes to get there. It's not ideal. I recognize that, but at least it's something and, and on a, a, a frequent basis too, just to encourage people. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, we, I'll talk to Joe. Maybe we, we can either between signage or at least our variable message boards, um, but we'll try to do what we can to, to get the word out.
Thanks, Bill. Jonathan.
Thank you. Very, very quickly, just, you know, piggybacking off of Counselor Smith Galvin's comment about sort of thinking of the future for this. Uh, I wonder if one of the things that we should contemplate is whether as part of the overall envisioned design and some of the remediation from a pedestrian standpoint of the Albion Street North Ave crossing, whether there's some opportunity to look at, um, some of the, uh, some of the state and federal grant support, maybe to look at quad gates for that intersection. Again, thinking of future improvements that we may need to consider. Uh, obviously not something we'll, uh, resolve today.
Definitely not, but, um, yeah, we, I can take a look into, into any potential railroad grants, but that's, that program is, uh, the railroad industry is a little different than most of them. So there's not a ton of grants that are available for it, unfortunately. Um, you know, believe it or not, our complete streets money is going for pedestrian improvements. That's already part of it. So, that even kicks us out of the shared streets, um, grant that, that Erin was talking about before. We actually were looking at, um, at that intersection for, um, for traffic light enhancements as well as some pedestrian stuff. But because we're already doing pedestrian enhancements with our complete streets money, we kind of lose out on the shared streets potential. So, um, the way the grant system works is very complex to say the least, but, um, I'm, I'm happy to look in to see if I can find anything on railroads. But I haven't, I haven't come across them so far. So.
Great. Thank you.
Paul, is that from before? Do you have another point?
Just one last point, Madam Chair, uh, to either Bill or to Steve. Um, can we look into, uh, lifting the no-left turn onto Nord Ave coming off of Broadway during this shutdown? So that people aren't forced to go to Main Street to get back home, to get back into the West Side? Is there any way that we can look into?
Yeah, we're already, we're already doing, we're already doing it. If it hasn't been removed yet, we've already discussed it and decided to remove it. So that's.
We discussed it with, um, Lieutenant Anderson and he felt that traffic felt that that was a good thing to do. So yes, that's a help in the short term.
So in the short term, will there be a sign saying that left turn permitted?
Yeah, we can, we could make sure that it's clear.
So we'll probably do a temporary left turn allowed or something. So it's a little different. So people will know that it's temporary. We, we can, I'll come up with something for that.
I think that's a, that would be a great help. Thank you very much. Thank you, Anne.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Um, thank you, Bill. That was great. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Bill.
I am going to, um, because our COVID team is working so hard twenty-four seven, I'm going to jump to item eight. So they can at least get out of here before we do other things. So, um, Steve, do you start the COVID update or is that Tom or Ruth?
No, I can, I can start. They, they have been working, um, uh, you know, fabulously hard and, and following up on everything. And I certainly, um, appreciate, uh, all the work they've done. And unfortunately, we probably talk more than all three of us would like, multiple times on a daily basis. Um, Wakefield is unlike any other, uh, community right now. We are experiencing uptick in numbers and, um, but I think that the, uh, community is doing the best that they can. Um, we're seeing people trying to behave, behave. I'm not hearing about the huge gatherings here. But I have another, um, communities, but maybe I haven't heard about them and that Ruth or Tom can talk about it. Um, but we did, um, we have listened to some, uh, very, um, uh, pointed calls and comments from the public and from members of the council, particularly regarding testing. And how can we, you know, the, they say the best thing for us to do is to test our people, let our, get our community tested. Um, so then they know what to do. They know how to handle things and how to stop the spread. So, um, and so what I'd like to do is maybe turn it over to, uh, Ruth and Tom to talk maybe right off the bat about an exciting, um, uh, new option that we have, a limited, a limited new option for some of our townspeople. So, um, I don't know, maybe, uh, Ruth, can you unmute and you can talk about that? Oh, you know what I'm, you know what I'm muted, Ruth?
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Um, thank you for this opportunity. I actually have, um, actually two parts for, um, some new testing options for our community. So, um, the first part is I am pleased to say that the town is going to be offering COVID, pre-COVID testing for Wakefield residents and, uh, people who work for the school department and for the town. We're going to be having three days of COVID testing, which will be this, uh, upcoming Sunday, which is the thirteenth. And then the following weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And we're going to be doing it at the Voke. So that will, people can, um, line up along Hemlock Street. We, some people may remember that we did an exercise, um, several years ago practicing using this site. So we, we've used it before. We're pretty comfortable with it. We'll be doing it with Cataldo ambulance. We're using CARES Act money to pay for it. And it will be open from nine AM to five PM each of those three days. And we will test one thousand people each day. So we will be able to test three thousand people within those two weekends. Now, that's a, a one-time or I guess three-time event. However, um, today the governor also announced some, um, additional testing in our area. I think everybody knows that the Saugus site is, is great, but has some very long lines at this point. But they're expanding the Lynn site to use a model like what they've been doing in Revere, which basically means Lynn will have the capacity to test a thousand people a day going forward. So that increases the capacity in this area significantly. So two things, we'll have, uh, for Wakefield only those three days at the Vokes. And then, um, once they're up and, and got their facility up and running, then Lynn will have much expanded capability. Uh, a thousand tests a day is a lot and they'll be, so that's two testing, two testing options for the public. They'll, all of those testing sites will be PCR testing, which is the, um, standard that we like to use. So I would say that's our, um, biggest news. The, our, our numbers are increasing dramatically. And, uh, it, it's not unlike our neighboring communities. All of our numbers are increasing dramatically, excuse me. However, um, we are actually in the process of hiring, um, another full-time or thirty-hour-a-week person. We're just in the process of doing the paperwork to bring her on board. So we'll have almost another full-time person who will only be doing Wakefield. And, uh, because as you know, I'm doing Melrose and Wakefield. And then we also have, um, some of the school nurses are doing their own cases. And then we also have a couple of other, three other part-time nurses, excuse me, who are also doing contact tracing. So we do have additional resources. It's still not enough for us to keep up. We are prioritizing the cases, especially on the weekends. We go through the cases and pull out anybody who's under the age of nineteen. Make sure that we get all the kids immediately. We do as much as we can do. All the other cases are taken by the Community Tracing Collaborative, which I'm sure you've all heard about. They take cases twice a day off of the electronic surveillance system. So whichever cases we don't take, they take it ten and it two. They were averaging twenty-two hundred cases a day across the state. Last Thursday, they had four thousand. So we are at a situation statewide where nobody can keep up with the volume, um, of doing the case management and contact tracing. So we are prioritizing. We're doing as many as we can. What we can't do goes to the CTC. Um, we are going to be getting, we, the, well, we, the health department are getting another chunk of money. Um, I'm finding out later this week how much more specifically for health departments that are coming out of the Public Health Trust Fund. So there's four point one million dollars that are being distributed to the local health department. That's in addition to the sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars that we've received so far this year. That is almost offset, not completely. Uh, okay. I think that's it for now.
Thank you so much, Ruth. Tom?
Hi. Yeah, um, again with Ruth, uh, we've been trying to, you know, make the town safe. Uh, as far as the planning and preparation, it's going well. Uh, the CDC just came out with something on the fourth. The CDC just come out with something on the fourth. And you know, these next six weeks are really going to be crucial for us if we're going to get, try to keep the numbers down. CDC is trying to put the message out there already. They've let people not to travel during the holidays. That if you're going to celebrate the holidays, please do it with the people you live with. You know, and then, you know, avoid the crowds, washing hands, don't go any poorly ventilated areas. So I mean, if we're going to get by this thing, people are going to have to be more diligent than they have been. You know, it's just, if we're going to stop it somewhere. We're really waiting the governor's orders. I know there's a lot of pressure on him and I'm getting word that they want him to do something. So I'm just not sure what he's going to do. We just purchased a couple of tents for drive-throughs, trying to prepare Ruth and I for when we do have the vaccines in. So a couple of nice tents coming in by the end of the month, nice little Wakefield.
I just wanted to say they have drive through tents, not the little 10 by 10s that people are used to seeing.
That's correct. And other than that, we're doing all right, as far as I can tell.
Tom, thanks so much.
Yeah, they've done really a great.
And I think.
Team is fabulous.
Sorry. I think people also have some questions about the vaccine. And on Wednesday, the, so in two days from now, the Public Health Council will be reviewing and hopefully approving a COVID distribution plan. It's a public meeting that'll be on Zoom. So if you go onto the state website, mass.gov slash D as in dog, P as in Peter, H as in health, Department of Public Health. And go into their search engine for the Public Health Council. I believe the meeting starts at 9:00 AM Wednesday morning. And you can listen firsthand on the discussion about the vaccine, the COVID vaccine distribution. Local health departments and the town won't be involved in the distribution process till probably phase three, which they're anticipating to be in the spring. But we're still preparing.
Thanks, Ruth. Steve, for the the COVID testing, I know when you and I had talked, it's only Wakefield residents and employees, but you know, you can't bring your mother-in-law who lives in Reading to get tested.
Right, then why would you?
That was fresh. How about your favorite Aunt Sally? You can't bring her either. So I think we need to be really clear with whether the signage at the bottom of Hemlock. Employees are going to know that they can get tested, but you know, just to say Wakefield residents only, because I can imagine people will try to be a little. I don't know. Sneak around that.
And we will be pushing out pre-registration, if I'm not mistaken. So you can pre-register to get your information in there. So the line can move quicker. So please have your ID and and pre-register. Check the website for those items.
Excellent. Thank you.
And wear a mask.
And wear a mask, yeah.
Jonathan?
Thank you. Just actually, Steve, you sort of answered my question, but I just wanted to clarify. So will pre-registration be required or encouraged? Just thinking about sort of crowd management.
Encouraged.
Okay. Something that we would maybe look at after the, you know, what I, what I am concerned about is, you know, we end up with, you know, a line of, you know, 400 cars at 9:00 AM on the first Saturday. And so maybe I would just ask that depending on how that first Saturday goes, that we we consider whether it's something that we then would require for for the next weekend.
Now, we did, we did discuss that, but not everybody has the ability to pre-register. That's our concern. But I agree, if it gets crazy, we'll have to look at it.
Thank you.
Well, and I I've done several of these testings now between Melrose and Wakefield. And I would say 90% of the people pre-register. So it really isn't an issue for the few people that come that aren't pre-registered.
Great. Thank you. Ed?
I just wanted to to thank Mr. Mayo, Ruth and and Tom for getting this together. It's something that I've been asking about for some time. And I know that Steve, you've been incredibly, you know, receptive and and working on it with the team. So this is was really a team effort and I thank all of you for that. It really benefits our community. And I think, you know, you hear all these stories about other other places and you hear about, you know, long waits and you see on the news, of course, they they highlight on the places that you wait hours for. And I think for our community, knowing that there's somewhere they can go to be tested at incredible numbers, Ruth. I mean, 3,000 tests over three days is really, really impressive. So I thank all of you, you know, for bringing this together. And I think it's a tremendous service to our community. I do hope people take part.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like no other comments. Thank, thank you both, Ruth and Tom, for joining us again and giving us an update. Okay, moving back to item six, C Public Safety Building. Steve, do you have a quick little update?
Very, very quick little update. Some of the councils asked for some update on the many other projects we have going on as well. So the Public Safety Building, as we know, was approved by town meeting and passed a and survived a referendum challenge, I guess I would say. So the permanent building committee has actually hired the owner's project manager, which is Left Field, which is a company that has worked with us in the past and they were very, and we are very comfortable and happy with them. And they've hired the designer, HKT, which is the designer that is probably familiar to the town council. They did much of the work on the presentation. So over the next eight weeks, what HKT will be doing is actually laser scanning the entire building, which will make it much easier, I guess, much more accurate for them to then put the in, you know, the actual architectural plan together. And from them, they they will will, you know, finish the design. And then, which is very much of what we saw, I'll have a presentation back at the council so we can take a chance to look at that again. And then we'll be going out to bid for construction. So this is actually very exciting and is moving on actually very, very quickly. And I'm in constant contact with Joe Bertrand, the head of the PBC, and of course Chief Scory. So I think everyone is very excited there. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that or any other comments, but that's pretty well on that one.
Thanks, Steve. Any councils have any comments or questions? Seeing none. All right. Thank you for that update. Item number D, developments on Salem Street. We've heard from about a few concerns, but Steve, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, there are three, I would say, smaller projects on Salem Street. These are all mid, all apartments. So these are all, these are not condos, the apartment ownerships. 581-583 is a 19 unit mid-rise apartment. And that's actually been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, although the decision has not been written or filed as of yet. And there are three affordable units in that development. And I will say that that development per our zoning has, did not require any parking relief, as I recall, that there were not parking places on site. That was looked at by the Traffic Advisory Committee. 610 Salem Street is still is before the ZBA and 30 units are being proposed. There have been three bill hearings so far and the next one is on December 16th in front of the Board of Appeals, and that has five affordable units out of the 30. There's another one proposed that is 525-527. That is 21 residential unit, one office space for affordable units. And that has had one initial hearing so far and they're expected to come back on the 16th. I will say this, a lot of people made a lot of good comments, particularly about Walton Street. There is a Traffic Advisory Committee meeting that has been scheduled for December 18th at 8:00 AM. I will ask Lieutenant Anderson to put on the agenda a discussion regarding that corridor, for lack of a better term. And if we should monitor and look at any issues on on Walton in particular. I will say that, you know, whenever we look at a street and, you know, change any parking on that street, we we really like to make sure of the, you know, especially for parking, that the neighbors are all involved in this. So there might be some additional hearings on that. You'd be surprised how many people don't understand when we say residential parking only on a street, residents of that street, that that means residents. That doesn't mean your guests. So there's a fine line there that we try to try to work on. So Lieutenant Anderson is aware of this. I know that he's had discussions with a number of the neighbors and probably some of the councilors as well. So that's where we stand on that. So I would suggest that, and the chair was very correct. The 16th, which is next Wednesday, I would suggest that people tune into the Zoning Board of Appeals. That really is the adjudicatory board for these. And on the 18th, come back to the Traffic Advisory for more for Walton Street and a holistic look. We can start talking about that area.
Great. Thanks, Steve. I think it's even without the addition of the new developments, it sounds like Walton Street is getting some parking from apartments around there. So I think it's great for Lieutenant Anderson.
First I've heard of that. I hadn't heard of that.
Okay.
So it was good to, good to hear that.
Absolutely. No, Lieutenant Anderson does a great job there. So thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, I'm only going to come up. I understand through all the calls that I've received in that area, what their concerns are. We heard from a number of them already in respect to personal concerns of that area. We do know for a fact that there were two truck accidents. One took out a pole, one took down lines on Walton Street and made that whole neighborhood inaccessible to all safety vehicles. What the ZBA, what the council has at its disposal is to grant the resident only parking stickers. We don't need Traffic Advisory's permission. We don't need the ZBA's permission. That's under our purview to grant that. I think that's something that we should look into once we talk to all the neighbors in there to make sure that they fully understand what that option is. But I think that would work wonders towards calming the people down as far as having the overflow of cars going on to Walton Street. I don't know how we're going to handle the nine o'clock rush in the morning where once all three developments are approved and put in for the increase of 105 cars trying to get to work in the morning, when there are 60 or 70 trucks coming off of Kimball Street. And I've been there watching that happen. So I know firsthand that that's an issue that's going to have to be addressed. They've been taking a brunt of the hardships that one area ever since Lynn Field gave the condition that all traffic must turn left coming off of Kimball Street. So they've had been putting up this for years. Now they've got the development to deal with. So something I wish that the council would look into or consider once we move forward, that some sort of relief has to be given or some sort of protection for the people who live in that neighborhood, because there's only one way in and one way out. Maybe the resident only parking permits, we've been issuing them on multiple streets over the last nine months. So I don't think adding one more neighborhood would really harm anything at this point in time. But the neighbors really would have to really know what it means, as Steve said. That's a big issue. They have to know that it's for them, not the people coming to their house to visit. Thank you very much for your time.
Sure. Paul, I think what you said is what exactly what Steve said right before it, that Lieutenant Anderson has always been the impetus to do the resident parking. And then we certainly weigh in on it. So I think it starts with him. But maybe we also ask him, you know, take a more holistic look at that whole area. So I think that's a good point. And I, and I had someone ask me, why did Wakefield agree to have the left only Kimball exit? Well, we didn't agree. It's in Lynn Field. We would have loved to have been had a voice in that. And I, you know, I think we do. I can imagine, you know, as someone who also lives very close to 128, I understand in 93 increased traffic, but just taking a look at that, I don't know what we can do is if Department of Transportation regulations prohibit us from changing what Lynn Field does. But it's certainly worth a look. And I think starting with Lieutenant Anderson is a great way to do that. So Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly on this, my understanding, Steve, is these are the projects would have like their own. And I know that this is also like ZBA and there's other elements to this, but each of the projects would have their own traffic study. But do we, how are we able to, as as a council, be able to look at this kind of more in the aggregate to see like more big picture? Because each, you know, each traffic study would would obviously be tailored towards that building. And I imagine it's probably not going to be overstating any of the the traffic impacts. So, you know, how do we look, look at this kind of more in the aggregate? So to, you have to understand, I think, to some of the points that have been made here, especially to the the residence point that were made, you know, it's, there's a cumulative effect to this that is really going to create, you know, some some warning havoc. I understand that Traffic Advisory could help to mitigate that a bit with this resident parking, but the bottom line is we have many streets that are converging together into one exit point. And then we're talking about adding a lot more vehicular traffic there. So, you know, how can we look at that a little more holistically?
Well, I think what's important to, what's, we're lucky, very lucky that we do have a traffic consultant. We've had him, we've had the firm a long time, VHB. In fact, a lot of the developers are upset that they can't use VHB to do their own traffic studies because we've got them on retainer. Matthew at VHB, VHB has reviewed all of these three developments together. Because he's sat on every one of the hearings, he's seen all of the, all of the traffic studies and they've kind of dovetailed off each other. And it seems that what he's saying is that in that general corridor, you know, giving traffic counts and giving his expertise, there is a de minimis effect on traffic on for for these three developments. But I'm going to ask them to relook at that to make sure in the in the next.
I think it's helpful. I think it's also helpful for residents to understand that the these, these traffic, you know, assessments are then presented to the town and then the town through VHB is able to look at them, because that's an important component to this. And and again, if we're talking three projects, but what if there's a fourth or a fifth project, you know, at what point do we kind of hit, you know, more than a breaking point even by, you know, VHB, you know, assessment?
Right. Nope, I agree.
Thanks, Ed. Okay, seeing no further comments. Let's move to item six E. High school. I know we do have some news on the high school. I took part in signing something that was very exciting. So Steve, can you update us on that, please?
Absolutely. So as the council remembers at the November town meeting, that the town did approve the funding for the feasibility study through the SBA. And there's a number of hurdles you got to go through with SBA. You kind of hit each thing at the same time. The last one where they were looking at the design enrollment for the school. And, you know, we went back and forth on that and they had actually increased what they think is an accurate number for the design for the school. And we will now be able to be in front of them for the high school for their meeting on December 16th, where they will actually formally invite us into the feasibility study program. So that's a very exciting milestone. After that meeting, what will happen and it's, it's we know it's going to happen, right? We've hit all the milestones. We know that's going to happen. We will then get, you know, the the paperwork from the SBA to go out and actually hire an owner's project manager for the high school. And that owner's project manager will then work with us, school building, with our, with our local committees here, the Public Building Committee and the School Building Advisory Committee, where we will go out and actually hire the OPM and then hire an architect, which is really where the design is going to happen. So it's very exciting. We were given the option of either getting on the December 16th meeting or moving into January or February. We opted to get it earlier in. And so it's kind of very exciting to get that that moving and what have you.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve on that? Sure, we'll have more as we move further into the.
Very exciting updates, but.
No, it's good though. Hey, we're moving forward. That's, I think that's exciting. Okay, looks like we're good. Excellent. Moving on to item number seven, Market Street. So I can report that Steve and I are going to meet with representatives from Lynn Field and Market Street to talk about the issue with the signs. And just to tell them that that is in direct violation of the agreement that was reinforced just a few years ago. So Steve and I will have that meeting in the near, near future, I assume, Steve.
Yeah, I would, I would, I wouldn't try to set that up for later this week.
Yeah, that's perfect.
It's set up in January. It's too late for this year.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. So we're going to be meeting with them to indicate that those signs are in violation. They can't have them. That's that, that's on Market Street. I, you know, as someone who, any mother of a teenage girl, frankly, has been to Market Street 1,000 times. That's that, that's on Market Street. I, you know, as someone who, any mother of a teenage girl, frankly, has been to Market Street a thousand times. And I always use Audubon Road because I live in Wakefield. That's, it seems to me a lot of Wakefield resident residents would go out that way. I've never waited in more than three cars of traffic at the light ever. But that said, we need to hold them to that agreement. So I'm looking forward to, for Steve and I to go take no hostages delayed later in the week. I feel confident we can do that. Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly. As you all know, I brought this to the council's attention and it was before Thanksgiving. So I appreciate that you're going to meet with Linfield and try to get them to see our way of thinking right now in regards to not one document, but two documents that they are in direct violation of. The sign still exists today, the highway sign at the, the Whole Foods exit that says exit right to ninety-five. Does anyone know what the waggle dance is? Someone used this analogy for me and it applied to this particular site. The waggle dance is what a bee does when it goes back to the hive and tells the hive how to get to the flower that it just got the pollen. And it informs every bee in the hive on how to get to that location. This is what's going on with that sign. That sign is telling people, leave here. But remember, it's also a way to go back in. And that's my fear that there's going to be an increase of traffic at exit forty-two because they are allowed to continue to this Wakefield. And that's nothing more than what I really feel at this time that they're doing.
Right. Well, that's why we're meeting. That's where we're going to meet with Market Street as well. And as one of those bees, I ignore the sign because I live on the other side. So
But you're out of Wakefield, so you wouldn't be. But what about all the people that aren't Wakefield residents that are using that exit?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it's kind of been there long enough that people feel their way. But that said,
Does it make it right?
I just said it didn't, Paul. I said the sign should be gone, but I don't see insane traffic at Market Street. And I'm there unfortunately on my pocketbook, probably a little too much. But yeah, so Stephen
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, Steve and I will absolutely update the council. Thank you. Ed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do think you, in hearing some of the, the community comments too on this. And I understand, you know, what you're saying, Madam Chair, that it's, it's not currently an issue. I often take Audubon Road and I don't have that to be an issue. But I do think that the concern and to the extent you and Mr. May can express is the concern being that they're trying to, you know, create like new driving patterns or behaviors. That's really where it lies. Because as I agree with you, I've not been backed, you know, backed up more than three cars onto Audubon Road currently. But I don't want a year from now to be backed up, you know, twenty cars because now that suddenly becomes, oh, this is the cut through. So I do think that there, there is a lot of merit in trying to head this off, you know, as you are. And I, and I thank you both for doing that. And expressing to them that, you know, we're talking, our concern isn't so much, okay, it's the holidays. So people are going to maybe, you know, be rerouted for a weekend or two. It's more what sort of adaptive behaviors are people going to have as a result of that, which can cause problems for us. And we went to great pains to make sure that exit forty-two was as best protected as we could all the way through it. I would just hate to see, you know, little things like this, your creep becoming into a bigger issue. So I just, I thank you for that.
Yeah, excellent point. We will update folks. Okay, moving on to item number nine, licenses. So approval of the two, twenty twenty-one licenses as presented in the meeting material. I have to, we have several. And you know that I always stumble over that word. But thankfully Bronwyn Delavope loves language as much as I do because she told me that it is pronounced vidler. And I looked it up because I have to and I, you know, teach writing. So now we're voting on common vidler licenses. No one ever has to pronounce the word as it's spelled. So I thank Bronwyn for that. So I don't have to stumble. As presented, can I please have a motion? And second, and then we'll have any discussion on the common vidler licenses as listed in the packet.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Moved by Jonathan. Seconded by Julie. All right. Any discussion on the vidlers listed? Now I'm going to keep saying it. Seeing none, I'll have a vote to approve the licenses. Myself, yes, Julie.
Yes.
To Jonathan.
Yes.
Ed.
Hi.
Paul.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
And Peter. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Moving now to entertainment licenses as listed in the packet. If I could please have a motion and a second to approve the entertainment licenses.
Motion moved this late.
Thank you, Paul. Seconded by Jonathan. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the vote myself. Yes, Julie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Ed.
Hi.
Paul.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Peter indicates yes. Thank you. We have lodging house license. We have one lodging house in Wakefield. If I could have a motion in a second to approve that license.
Moved.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Julie, right?
Yes.
I saw you not muted, so I called. All right. Any discussion on the lodging house license? Seeing none, taking the vote myself. Yes, Julie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Ed.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Peter. Peter thumbs up acknowledging. Thank you. And our last license is class two licenses. We have two as listed in the packet. If I could have a motion in a second, please.
Move this late.
Moved by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Discussion. Okay, I'm taking the vote myself. Yes, Julie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Ed.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
And Peter acknowledging yes. Unanimously voted for all licenses. Thank you. Item number ten, we have a gift acceptance. It's really so meaningful. Request from the Megan Burnett Foundation to accept and expend a gift or gifts in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars to cover costs associated with the purchase and installation of the new scoreboard at the Wakefield Memorial High School softball field with thanks. We can have a little discussion on this. I know Steve, Julie and I were there. Just looking at the, the site. Move to accept the gift.
So move with thanks.
Move by Julie, seconded by Paul. And discussion, Julie, did you want to say anything?
Just thank you so much to the Megan Burnett Foundation and the family. They have been tremendous supporters of, you know, softball and the girls and women who play it in our town. And they also really spearheaded the kind of revitalization of Blatt's Field, which just looks beautiful. Got a few games in this spring despite the pandemic. So thank you to them very much. I know there's been some talk of recognizing Megan on that field. And I think that's probably going to move forward, starting with the school committee. So thank them very much.
Excellent. Yeah, Julie, myself and Steve were there with Megan's dad and some others, Dennis Fazio, looking at the field, looking at the sign and really finding a beautiful way to memorialize Megan. So I need to take the vote on this. Myself, yes, Julie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes, with much thanks.
Excellent. Paul.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Peter. Yes. Great. Thank you so much again to the, to the Burnett family and the foundation. Item number eleven, announcements. And Steve and I will start with the letter to the Emmanuel Episcopal Church. You saw that letter in your packet. You know, they had asked for permission to hold a service on the town common Christmas Eve, I believe, Steve.
Correct.
Yes. And as much as it pained us to say, we indicated that that could not happen now. We haven't opened up any of our public lands for any type of gatherings. And especially when it seems that we're in such a significant spike. I don't think that would be a smart thing for us to do. They could certainly limit indoor worship as some of our churches do, but it was not an easy request to say no to. But the health of the community is took precedence over us allowing for an outdoor service on Christmas Eve. Does anyone have any questions or? No? Okay. Thank you. So other announcements from the team. So I'm not, Jonathan.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, you know, while, while certainly a lot of our in-person holiday gatherings aren't happening, there are a couple of virtual gatherings that are happening, including the virtual menorah lighting, which will be this Thursday at six o'clock, December tenth. So hopefully people are able to participate in that. The Wakefield High School Drama Department is also doing a livestreamed performance of A Christmas Carol coming up actually next Friday, the eighteenth at seven thirty. There are tickets available at wakefieldtheater.org and should be a good, good show. And I think for many of us who are starved from any sort of entertainment outside of our house, it's not outside of our house, but still a great opportunity to see the tremendous talent that we have at the high school. Finally, just wanted to mention, I will have office hours coming up next Saturday, the nineteenth, from ten to eleven thirty at the library. Make sure the library steps, not inside the library. That is also the last sidewalk sale from the Chamber of Commerce for the year. So great opportunity for folks to come down and say hello.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Ed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am kind of amazed that I'm able to announce this on December seventh. But the pit is having expanded hours. So this, this Wednesday and this Saturday, I know there's been a lot of pretty wild weather. So if you have down limbs or weren't able to finish, you know, any of your yard work this Wednesday and this Saturday, the regular hours for both those days. And don't forget that your, your permits are required. And then otherwise, this is the last meeting we have of the year. It's been quite a year indeed. I, I wish all of my colleagues, as well as the community, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, you know, whatever it is that you celebrate. I hope that you, you find plenty of peace and joy during the holiday season. And I think we can all cheers to, to twenty twenty-one. So with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Ed. Julie.
Um, just two quick things. The plastic bag recycling is only going through this coming Saturday. I think I had posted that it had ended, but it was extended till this Saturday. So if anybody has plastic bags or wrappings or bubble wrap, they can be dropped off behind Town Hall. I understand we're actually not going to be able to continue to collect them. This is all part of a challenge partnership with Trex. And we're very close to getting five benches. So I figure maybe we'll add the elementary schools in Doyle. But we are looking in, Joe at DPW is looking into continuing it under our new recycling contract. And until then, the environmental committee will be publicizing where stores in the region can collect items. So thanks to everybody for doing that. The other thing is I need to get my order in, but the Hartshorn House is doing their twenty twenty-one annual gift calendar. And actually, it's a kind of a nice gift to give to other people. They pick a name once a day in January of twenty twenty-one. So try to support the Hartshorn House. You can go to their website. It was in today's newspaper as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Maureen.
Just a couple of updates. I kind of miss the people I normally liaison with since I don't see them around anymore. So I checked in on them this week and just a quick update, Judy at the Senior Center, they're still providing transportation. They're doing small classes by appointment. And something she wanted me to share is that they have a computer room that any adult, you don't need to be a senior, but any adult can make an appointment and use their computer room. So good to know and share with people. The library had that grant that they got and they, their theme is commit to your community and get involved. And there's actually a panel discussion on Wednesday at seven PM. Their website has more information. Chief Scori let me know that we have three new officers graduating on Friday. Really exciting. And the, the public safety, the police department was also awarded twenty-four thousand dollars in a grant for traffic enforcement, which is great. And also let me know that on our drug takeback day on October twenty-fourth, they collected five hundred and ninety-four pounds of prescription medication. And I confirmed that that was the right number. So five hundred and ninety-four pounds that they destroyed appropriately. And then just two other things. Jonathan mentioned the menorah lightning, lightning. Steve, I'm hoping you're going to give an MBTA update since we have some breaking news on that. So I'm going to let you do that. And then I just want to say, I appreciated the updates today on all the projects. I was one of the people that kind of asked for them. I think what Councillor DeBroski said about kind of like being able to kind of follow big picture when there's a lot going on in one part of town. And so if we can make that a regular part, I think that was really helpful. I, I enjoyed all those updates and I know, you know, things are moving along. And so as much as your department heads or you, Steve, can do those updates, it was much appreciated today. So thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Paul. You're on
Thank you. Thank you. It's hard to hit that button every once in a while. I am old, remember? First of all, I would like to have Steve, if possible, reach out to National Grid. I think the, the point person for National Grid, Brendan, needs to be commended or congratulated for the way he handles any and all complaints from the citizens of the town in regards to the construction that's going on. People ask questions all the time and I automatically refer them to his number because that's what National Grid wants to do. And my feedback that I'm getting from those people are that he's very receptive. He gets back to them within an hour. The work, if they say there's a pothole from their construction, they're out there digging it up, refilling it. So they've been doing a great job. So you have to give him the credit though. So sometimes you have to go out and reach out to one of your contractors and say, hey, you're doing a great job. And he is doing a great job at being our point person on the ground and making sure that the project doesn't impact the community any more than it is. So if that could possibly be done, Steve, maybe, I don't know.
Sure.
The other thing that I would like to do is I'd like to thank all the town departments for all of their support through the entire year. Two thousand twenty is going to be the year that everybody wants to forget. But they stepped to the plate. They've did the best that they could with the things at hand. Fire, police, electric, DPW, all town departments that did, did the best to have as employees and kudos to them all. And I want to wish them all a happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas in the upcoming month. But Hanukkah is on the tenth. Happy Hanukkah to all my friends out there. Christmas is around the corner. To all my councillors, you want cookies? You got to come to my house and do a drive by because I'm not delivering this year. I'm already up to four hundred and I'm still cooking. So
Be back soon, Paul.
There you go. Have a Merry Christmas, everyone, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Yeah.
Steve.
Oh, I'm usually at the end.
So do you want to be at the end?
No, 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 no. The dovetail what Maureen was alluding to with the MBTA, want to thank the town council for their support and their participation in our working with the MBTA to take another look at the proposed cuts that they did, that they did put on the table, particularly the removal of the one thirty-six bus line and limiting weekend and evening commuter rail and bus service into Boston, as well as our state delegation who did work very closely. It appears at this point that maybe those cuts were premature, although anything can happen. And that hopefully they are off the table, at least as of now. It was amazing to me in listening to, reading some of the information and listening to some of the information that the, there's so many different boards there and I forget, Maureen knows better than I do. The Advisory Control Board kind of figured out that they had overstated their budget deficit by what, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars? A million or something like that. So I thought that was quite amazing. In fact, I was trading texts with the former head of the savings bank, Brian McCoubrey, who was telling me, he says, how can this be? And I get, I get it. So hopefully we've pushed back on that, but I think we need to be vigilant and really put, really push the point that we are basing everything, not everything, but a lot of our, our history, a lot of our future on transit oriented development, particularly public transportation. You know, even some of these, these buildings that we discussed tonight on Salem Street a little bit. Wouldn't be great if there was bus service, you know, frequent bus service in that area. So we didn't have to rely on cars and what have you. Seems to me that that's So we didn't have to rely on, um, cars and what have you. Seems to me that that's where we should be expanding. I think it helps people that need help, uh, more than others do. And for the MBTA to kind of fix a decade-long problem on the backs of the most vulnerable and the poor to me was, um, an awful solution. So hopefully, hopefully we've, um, turned a little bit of the corner there. And again, I want to thank the council for all their support on that. And hopefully, um, that's where we are unless something happened today that I haven't been able to catch up with the things. No, I, there was nothing new today, Maureen. I said, I was trying to see if I missed something.
No, and Ann, if I could just.
Sure, of course.
Thank you, Steve, for, um, there, there was a regional kind of, um, meeting and Steve and Counselor Chines both testified. I just want to, you know, I shout out to our delegation that was for the whole Haverhill line and really was Melrose, Wakefield and Stonem. So Senator Lewis's district, who all kind of spoke about how awful these cuts would be. I think that they miscalculated by hundreds of millions, Steve was thinking when they say that. And I think a lot they're waiting to see, um, you know, in, uh, hopefully in 2021, a better year, as Paul is wishing all of us, but some federal funds. An incoming president who loves trains and commuter rails. So who knows? Maybe we'll get some infrastructure, um, money. I also, uh, you know, the, the fascinating thing was that our ridership is down to 30%, but it's the same in, in New York, like 30% is still a lot of people that are using the commuter rail. And to make decisions based during a pandemic, when we are all going to go back to taking the bus and taking the commuter rail and taking the MBTA was just foolish on their part. I don't, somebody said like utter disappointment. I think it was Mayor Broder who kind of said like something like that. So I just, I want to thank Steve and the delegation. I know we quickly put in letters and I really do think we activated a lot of people in town, um, sent letters and filled out the survey. And, and, you know, it's, it's not done till February supposedly, but I, I was impressed by how quickly we activated. So thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Um, Steve, are you all set?
I am all set. Thank you.
Okay. Tom, anything?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I just want to thank, um, echo kind of what Paul said is to thank, um, all our employees for, for what they've done this past year. Wakefield's in a better than decent shape, I would argue, than we've seen a lot of communities around us because of, I'll always say the leadership from the top, meaning Steve, not us necessarily. We support him, but, um, just the, the way all our workers, um, have behaved and our, and our citizens as well. I think we are, we are doing a, uh, our townsfolk are also doing a nice job. So, um, happy holidays. I wish you an absolutely peaceful, joyful holiday season. Hashtag 2020. See you in the rearview mirror, um, moving forward. So, uh, thank you all. And if I could have a motion for adjournment.
Seconded.
Moved by Ed, seconded by Jonathan. Um, all in favor? Myself, yes. Julie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Ed.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Maureen.
Yes.
And Peter. Thumbs up. Yes. Excellent. Thank you all, um, and have a safe end of the year. Take care.